All right, so this is the regular work session meeting for the City of Minutrista City Council, April 5th, 2021. It's 5:30, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. And our first order is going to be a roll call. Make sure everybody can be heard. And I'll start out, council present are myself, Lisa Whalen, the mayor, and councilors Anne McGregor.
Here.
Kathleen Raffkin.
Here.
Pam Mortensen.
Here.
And John Chumperlin.
Here.
And also with us this evening are staff members, Administrator Mike Barone.
I am here.
Public Works Superintendent Gary Peters.
I am here.
Community Development Director David Abel.
I am here.
Finance Director Brian Grimm.
Here.
Director of Administration Ally Paul Fuss.
Here.
Our City Clerk Chris Lindquist.
I'm here.
And Attorney Ron Beatty.
Here.
And I don't think we have our engineers with us. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Allison Fousky, our engineer.
I'm here.
And Adam Gedbois.
Here.
Also engineer with WSB. I think that is everybody. So with that, we have two items on our work session this evening. We have with us Kevin Nguyen, who is our Hennepin County Assessor for this area for Minutrista. So welcome, Kevin. Thank you for joining us. And then after Kevin's presentation and questions and answers, we'll move on to discussion of our assessment policy. So again, welcome, Kevin. Thank you for joining us. I know this is a very busy time of year for you, so we appreciate you taking time out and coming and talking to the council here. So I'm going to hand it right over to you. Can you hear me?
I don't know. He's looking like he doesn't know what's going on, so.
Okay.
It says he's connected via the web, but not connected audio, so.
Hello, Kevin. Can you hear us?
Uh, I don't think he can, so let me see if I can call him on his phone.
You call him, okay.
All right.
Or can you type something? Can you get, type something on the screen to him?
Yeah, I'll try that because I don't have a phone number.
Okay.
Brian, do you have a phone number for Kevin? You want to try give him a call while I try to type in? This is kind of weird, so.
I might, let me see.
Yeah, let me, uh.
On his screen, his looks a little different. It's got like a little white, it's like an audio box, looks like it's muted or something.
Right. Says he's not connected, so I don't know what this story is.
I just.
So I just sent it to him, so we'll see if he reads it. Doesn't look like he's reading it.
I sent him a chat as well.
Okay.
I don't know if he, if he can see it.
Well, if he's not looking at it.
Okay.
Might go on screen and hold up a sign.
There you go.
Except I don't have a camera. I don't have a camera.
I tell you what we'll do, um, maybe my.
Try the other one.
Okay, um.
Other topic first and then.
Yeah, I was gonna say, let's start with the assessment policy. And if we can get Kevin's attention and get him to unmute or whatever needs to be done, then we'll move on to Kevin. Um, yeah, if somebody has a camera that they could put up a sign, that would be.
Because I don't have a camera, that's why we ordered those computers.
Yeah.
Let me see if I can find a number for him.
There you go, Kathleen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well done, Kathleen, well done.
I, I think he got the message.
I don't know, he's grabbing his phone, so maybe he's calling us.
Yeah, I think so. Thank you, Kathleen.
Yeah, good move.
No problem.
I wonder if he just has to reboot. I sometimes when I have trouble connecting initially, I just restart my computer and then it works. I don't know, I don't know what issue he's having, but who knows?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, in the setting function, there's the turn on computer audio, so we might just have that off too.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, I still think, Mayor, that we're probably, our best bet is to flip flop the order of the two items on our agenda and just start with that. And by time Kevin figures it out, maybe we can talk with him about it, so.
Okay, all right. So, um, the assessment policy discussion, I had envisioned it being a, um, other than, not just talking about the interest rates. Um, I thought we needed to take a look at the whole policy. Um, that was my understanding, but, um, I'm not sure that we're going to have time to go through the entire policy. But, um, there are a couple of things besides the interest, obviously, we can talk about that. Um, but then there's a couple of other things too, so I'm not sure. Um, Mike, did you want to start out with this discussion or who wants to take this?
Um, you know, I, I don't think I'm going to be able to add too much to the beginning of it. I mean, I, uh, we did send out, I think, believe Ally sent out the entire assessment policy to everyone this afternoon. Uh, we do have some items that were in the packet that we could certainly start with as well. Um, I did ask, or we did ask Ron, so we might have to come inside, sorry, Ron, but we did ask Ron to participate in this particular discussion as well, so we can kind of explain. You know, there are some nuances to, um, the assessment policy in regards to, um, what type it is and what that means that you can do and cannot do, and if people challenge it, if, all that kind of stuff. So I don't know if you want to start with Ron, Mayor, and.
Okay.
Get a quick thumbnail of types of assessments and things of that nature.
Yeah, let me just ask, Kevin, can you hear us now?
Yes, I can, I, I'm in by phone, so I can hear you now.
Okay, do, do we want to go back to Kevin real quick so he can then get on with his evening? So.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, all right. Uh, so Kevin, welcome. Sorry about the hiccup here, but thank you for joining us, and I'm going to hand it right over to you.
Okay, maybe it looks like my computer's unhappy with going, it's kind of what it's looking like. Um, so anyway, I'll just kind of, I've got a little bit of a, uh, uh, outline here, so if you see me looking away, it's because I'm looking at something else. Um, uh, my, I'm Kevin Nguyen, I'm with the Hennepin County Assessor's Office. I've been the appraiser for Minutrista since 2003, and, uh, I've been with the county since 2000. And prior to that, I was, um, I was a fee appraiser for seven years and a Realtor for seven years before that. So that's my general background for the couple of new people that maybe don't know me. Um, and then I try to, uh, just kind of give you a brief overview of, of the work that we do in general and, um, and give you an idea of what the market's been doing over this past year. Uh, I kind of, I was asked to maybe touch on what I think might be happening for the, for the future and, um, and then try to leave some time for questions. Uh, do you have a kind of a time limit that you want me to hit?
I think we're kind of looking at 15 minutes. Um, we've got about 15, 20 minutes max, including questions.
Okay, I will roll things right along then, and, um, if anybody knows me, I, I tend to get very witty when I get into, into talking about assessments, but I'll try to keep it short. Um, so very briefly, what the, what the assessor's job is to do is to, is to follow the historical sales that have happened over the prior year to try to, uh, and then try to trend those to follow whatever the market's doing. We don't try to predict what the market does. We are tasked with, with basically being historians. The, um, the way we do that is, is we, I have a 12-month study period that we have to look at each year that runs from the beginning of October, and in this case of 2019, through the end of September 2020. That's our 12-month statutory window across the, so statewide, all assessments are under the same, same requirements. Um, we look at all the sales that have happened within that period of time. Um, vet them to make sure that they're not, they're not new construction, that they're arm's length transactions, meaning there's not, they're not between relatives, there's no on, on outside influence that may have affected the, uh, agreed on price. Um, uh, eliminating anything that, that might have had a remodel or a basement, you know, added to it that might change what we're looking at from, from one year to the next, so that we're only comparing apples to apples for growth numbers. Um, and once we've done that, we, uh, we can adjust the, the rates per square foot and the depreciation schedules and, and on which we apply to bathrooms and fireplaces and product stalls and all that type of thing to, to get our system, our modeling system to match what the sales are actually, actually did across the whole county. And then locally, we apply those rates and, and see where we sit in different neighborhoods and across, across, uh, different property types for, for townhomes and single family and two stories and, and rambles and old and new. Um, find out what, uh, what kind of ratios, sales ratios we're looking at. Are we at, are we turning, are we seeing that we're at, at 85% of what properties we're selling for over that period of time? Or are we, or are we closer to 95% or, or even over, over 100%? And based on that, we're required by the Department of Revenue to turn in a ratio between 90 and 105%. Our target is, uh, is a, is a, a very narrow range between about 95 and 95 and a half percent. That's where we're shooting for. Um, so if we find out, for instance, in a, you know, particular neighborhood of Hunter's Crest that, um, that we've had, you know, 40 or 50 sales in that neighborhood and we're at, that's, you know, uh, 89% of what they sold for after we, after we worked out what our building rates are going to be for the year, we know that we need to make about a 6%, 6 and a half percent increase to catch up to those sales. And once we know that we're doing that with the sale, we then can apply the same rates per square foot and building lot values and, and depreciation schedules to every other property in the, in the neighborhood. Um, and they'll be moving proportionate to what the sales did for their style, size, quality, age and whatnot. Um, so once that's all sudden, once that's all done, um, we edit them endlessly for, for, uh, to try to make sure that we're not, we're not missing anything, that, that any errors or, or, you know, all the, all the right number of zeros are on everything. And, and, and try to get the assessment approved. I have to get it approved by, by my managers, uh, and then the county assessor has to sign on it. And ultimately, it has to get signed on by, signed off on by the Department of Revenue. Um, so, once we've, um, once we've done that, then, uh, we can start working on posting, or posting those values to, and getting out the value notices sent out. The value notices go out, uh, typically late March, early April this year. Um, one of the outcomes of, of the pandemic was that we, everything kind of got moved up a whole bunch, partly, you know, for a lot of different reasons downtown. But, um, uh, everything went up pretty much countywide in, in about a week or so, a week and a half, instead of spread out over, over, um, maybe a month. So, um, we got flooded kind of heavy, you know, heavily early on with, with calls. Um, and, but things have dropped off fairly quickly after that. I'm still getting them, you know, one or two a day, but nothing like we saw the first several days. Um, so taxpayers can then, based on what the back of their value notice says, can, if they disagree with what the value is, they can call us to talk to, talk to me about it. Um, right now, our calls go into the mound voicemail and we check them hourly uh, and send them to whichever appraiser they're, they're supposed to go to. And then they get a call back and we go through the same exact process we did when we were, um, working out of our offices out west. Um, from there, my process, even though I can't actually physically go out and see anything this year, um, we're relying on, on, uh, new aerial tools, new street photo tools. Uh, sometimes, um, having a taxpayer send us photographs or, you know, even do video walkthroughs sometimes to try to give us the best picture that we can see, um, without me physically going out, going out and looking at them. And then to do the same, same exact work I've always done, pull some comparables, try to make sure that we've got the data right, see if there's anything that, that warrants an adjustment to the value. And if there's not, uh, talk to them about, uh, why, and why I think the value is right and, and give them examples of, of sales that, that support that, and, and see where things go from there. If they don't like what that, what the outcome of that is, if you, through the open book process, which is what this is all called, um, they still have the ability to appeal to the county board. If that ends up happening, we would end up having, having our appraiser, other than me, look at it to give a, a whole nother set of, set of eyes on it. Um, so far this year, I've got maybe 40 or so total calls. Probably 50% of those are home state questions, so I really haven't had an awful lot of, uh, in-depth reviews to dig into. Um, some of those, we, but because, because people have until middle of May to contact us through the open book process, um, there's still plenty of time for people to call. And if you talk to neighbors or taxpayers who, um, you know, have something to say about their value, um, tell them to give me a call. I'm easy to talk to and my job is not to try to keep the value up, it's to try to get it right. So, um, this year.
Kevin, maybe you. Kevin, could you maybe tell us, um, what are some of the increases that you've been seeing? I know there's different categories such as lake property, undeveloped, rural, agricultural. Can you kind of give us a, a quick scenario as to what we're seeing in terms of increases percentage wise?
And then Kevin, before you dive in, I do have the, um, summary up that I could share a screen on with. So it has the summary of the 2021, and then I also have the kind of broken down by, um, cities as you have in that report as well that's down a few pages, so you let me know if you want to use any of that.
Go ahead, go ahead and do that. Oh, that's what I'll be referring to.
Okay.
Um, in general, and then I'll also, I've got some kind of more, uh, off the cuff, um, what I know is happening sort of things that I'll, I'll throw on here too. Um, the sales books that we send out are, um, are, uh, just to kind of give you a, a high, high level view of, of what, what the growth numbers have been, what the total value for the city is. You can see, um, you see the, the off lake is about 4% and now, and the on lake is about 4.9%. You gotta be a little bit careful when you're dealing in generalities like that, because I have areas that are, are up 15% and I have areas that are up 0%. Um, I haven't really, haven't had any this year that have actually gone down, but these are averages. So, um, I'm not hearing from the people that aren't changing very much. And of course, I hear, hear a lot from the neighborhoods, um, but Palmer Point Off Lake stuff is, is one of them. They, they got hit very hard this past year due to the number of sales that came in. Um, and, uh, so you can see that, that townhomes are up substantially. Um, that's a function of, of them being the most, most affordable units in the places to live in, in the city. Uh, price points in, and this doesn't include the, the new construction, because we don't have any actual resales in there yet, uh, to speak of. A couple in the, in the older Woodland Cove stuff, but for the most part, not very much. Most of this is driven by the, by the, um, Morning, Morning View, uh, neighborhood and, um, and the Langwood stuff. Uh, those were in the, you know, the 180s, you know, 150s a few years ago. And, and they're just, because they're so affordable and the market is so tight and they're the ones that get, are the most likely to get multiple bids on them and people are driving up those values very quickly. They've gone up substantially year over year. Um, so those are the types of trends that we, we're seeing for townhomes. Um, some of that will probably soften as the, as the, uh, the number of choices increases. But, um, but generally, the market's been very strong. Market times are, are at, absolutely at, at the lowest that, that we have recorded in history in the metro area. Um, inventory is at its lowest point ever. Part of that is interest rates, part of that is, is, um, just a such low, uh, number of people putting houses on the market that the inventory is very low. And so that's what's, that's really what's driving, driving the market. We kind of have a, I keep seeing a tale of two markets where, you know, or two economies rather, where some people are still struggling and out of work and then probably 70 or 80% of the market is probably possibly doing better than they, than they were doing before. And, and it's showing up in, it's showing up off lake and on lake, and, and the new construction is, is going great times. You can see here that there's a, a grand total of, um, net interest and market value. We posted at $2.1 billion and change. Um, that's, uh, we've never, we've never seen, we never cleared the $2 billion market, market, $2 billion mark even during the, during the day day of the mid 2000s. Um, out of that $69 million is, is actual new construction. Uh, you'll see I have a note there that the overall value increase, um, is 8.14%. Uh, about 4.8 or so percent of that is market growth and all the rest of it is, is, uh, due to new improvements, new construction. Um, you had, um, let's see here, I had a couple notes. You had, yeah, 4.6% was market growth. Um, you had, um, you had a, a kind of a, a shortage of new lots being added, um, over this past year. Uh, there's certainly a, a, a good inventory that existed in Woodland Cove, but it's, it's, seems like it's selling out really fast. And I don't see a lot of, uh, new, new lots on the immediate horizon. I see some, I see the divisions, uh, that are coming through right now are kind of setting up for future phases. But at the moment, um, that, that count is getting low. Let's see here. I had this past year, um, I had 130 good sales, um, arm's length transactions that were part of our sales analysis. Uh, that's up from about 100, that would be what I would consider an average, average over the, over the, uh, prior several years. Uh, and that's up compared by comparison from in the, in the bottom of the, of the Great Recession where we were down to, you know, 60 or 70 sales a year. I think one year I had seven on lake sales for the whole city and, and maybe, maybe 40 or 45, um, single family res and some townhomes tucked in there. Trying to do an assessment with that small of a data set was very challenging. This year, we don't really have that kind of problem. We've got good, good information, we've got, um, a lot of sales in every single neighborhood. Um, and we're, and we're, you know, we usually be pretty confident in, in what the, what the market's telling us. Uh, I hope you might just switch forward to the, to the assessment growth summary. This is just something we put together, just, uh, historically, people were always questioning what, uh, what happened on lake and on off lake. Uh, and so you can kind of compare what's going on in, in your city to some of the other cities around the, around the lake. We only do this for the lake shore stuff, we don't do this across the whole, across the whole county. Um, and you can see that Minutrista is up amongst the, the higher on lake growth numbers and, and really off lake too. Um, I attribute that again to the, to the, to the Minutrista being kind of amongst the lower uh, price points across the, across the, the, um, the county. And, and the market is kind of growing up to Minutrista. Um, we saw that, we just again saw that in the mid 2000s where, where the Minutrista was one of the latest to, to get uh, up into the kind of stratospheric values. And it was also when the market fell down, it was one of the first parts to, to fall back. Um, right now, we're not really seeing any signs that, that we're going to see any kind of a great fallback though. Um, the next screen, uh, following this one, kind of give you a 10-year study of, of what the, what happened by city too, so you can kind of see what, what the trends were going back in time.
Okay.
So, um, let's see, where else was I going to go to? Uh, uh, well, I touched on parcel counts a little bit. Um, Minutrista only actually added 25 new bids to their overall parcel count for, between 20, uh, between 20, the 2020 system and 2021. Um, it's kind of hard for me to tell how many of those, you know, how many, exactly how many new houses happen at a given time, but the conversion of, of single family or of vacant lots to single family res uh, happens when, when they put a hole in the ground and we change the property type. So we had 40 new townhomes that we added and 111 single family res. Um, Lisa had asked if I would make a, make a comment on what that might mean for, what these types of numbers might mean for the, for the tax change. And kind of what I'll tell you is that, um, look at, like it, like a, like when a homeowner called me and says, what are my taxes going to be on my brand new house? Whatever the effective tax rate is for your given market in Minutrista, you can kind of generally say it's about 1.1% for single, for residential. Um, that you can take that number and, and if you put a $100,000 addition on your house, you can pretty closely take, that times about 1.1% and that'll tell you what, what that would have added to your tax if it were, if it were there for this year's tax, you know, taxes payable. You can kind of do the same thing for the $69 million worth of improvement on. If it were part of this assessment this year, that's what it would have, that's what it would have generated at fixed tax rates. That's not quite how it works, but that kind of gives you a, a general, general, uh, picture of, of, uh, how that would affect, what the effect of that it would be. On the other side of that.
I was just going to say, Kevin, for clarification, that's all taxing entities, that's city, school, county, special taxing districts, et cetera, that 1.1, correct?
Yeah, yeah, it, it, again, we're, we have to speak in generalities when we're talking about this. It changes a little bit. Um, with a higher value, the higher value properties pay a higher, um, effective tax rate and, and lower values, more of the value is under the $500,000 break point and, 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 and so it's lesser. They're also getting more, more home state credit, all those types of things balance that out. But, uh, again, very, very general, I always say, you know, don't, 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 uh, write a check based on that exact number, but it'll give you, uh, it'll give a taxpayer a sense of, of what their taxes are going to be if they found that new house that they just built in Woodland Cove and it started out as a lot tax this year and they wonder what the taxes are going to be for next year and what the escrow change is going to be, uh, once the mortgage company finds out what the, what the new tax bill is going to be. So you, again, you gotta be cautious with, you know, with the details on it, but it, it gives you a, a little bit of a sense of, of what those special things mean.
Thank you. Um, Kevin, I want to leave just a couple minutes and I'm going to interrupt here. Um, if the council has any specific questions, I want to make sure that those get answered. So, um, council, I'll start with Pam, any specific questions?
No, I think Kevin did a really good job of explaining it and I appreciate his time coming out to do it. Um, thank you.
All right, John?
No, no questions, thank you.
All right, and Kathleen?
No, no questions. I've actually talked to Kevin when we moved into Woodland Cove, so it's very easy to deal with and very helpful in explaining everything, so. Thank you, Kevin.
All right, and Anne?
Uh, no, no, no questions. Thank you very much, Kevin.
You're welcome. I think you're welcome to call, some client or another.
All right, thank you, Kevin. Um, again, like I said, we're on a timeframe here, so, um, not to cut you off, but I'm sure you have lots of work you can have fill your time with. And again, we really appreciate, um, you coming and presenting tonight and also working, um, with our residents. Uh, I too have had some discussions with Kevin in the past many years that I've lived here and he's always been very easy to work with, so thank you for that. So with that, thank you.
If you have any questions, call anytime.
All right, thank you. All right, um so we'll move now back to our assessment policy. Let's see, we'll start with Ron. Ron, can you give us a quick um couple of um informational items regarding any legalities surrounding special assessments?
Uh Mayor, before we go to Ron, I think I'm gonna actually have Brian kind of kick it off. And since he put most of the information that the council received in the packet and we'll let him talk a little bit about things and then hopefully let Ron chime in a little bit because I do know um he'll be able to give you some information as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, um thank you, Mike and Madam Mayor and Council. I guess yeah, my thoughts regarding this discussion and whether um it was on the same page of the council was seeing the two questions that seem to keep cropping up with the uh twenty twenty one potential projects seem to be the interest rate especially related this, you know, obviously been a question or request from on the uh MSA project out on Sunny Field as well as um you know, assessment per unit and sort of, you know, how the the benefit for the, you know, from the improvement ties into what we assess and is it at forty? You know, fifty percent is our policy, but when do we potentially deviate? So I guess just knowing that um we're probably going to have about thirty minutes tonight with Kevin, um you know, when speaking first, that my thought is to to try to keep it more focused on these two items, seeing they, I guess, to me would be the most pressing items with our upcoming um assessment hearings, you know, or at least potentially in a a later spring, summer here, and then if there was ever a desire to um fully um delve into the assessment policies similar to what um happened recently with like the nuisance ordinance, I think that would be more of a potential full hour discussion, so um hopefully everyone's okay with that. And um I guess maybe I'll just dive right into um, you know, the 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 packet material there, so um on page four of the packet was just the uh, you know, everyone got the the full special assessment policy email today, but it's um basically was exerted, I guess, or that's, I think that's correct terminology. Um page sixteen from the policy deals with the uh the interest rate and talks to that specific component as far as um for projects, you know, and most of our projects in the past had been issued by, you know, financed by debt issuance. More recently, we've gone to more of a pay as you go or or cash, you know, tax levy type components. So that's where the little bit of um, you know, differences came in on the more recent projects, but I guess we've um interpreted to that being, I think the policy even talks about, you know, using a you know, a similar type of methodology on projects that are funded internally um there, so. On pages five or
Yeah, so a couple of questions regarding that. First of all, this isn't a discussion about the school district's request. This should be a discussion about how the how the city council wants to move forward overall with our interest rate. That that's I want to make that clear because um this is going to affect all of the properties now and in in the future um as to what they would pay for interest rates. And so that I I just want to make that one clarification. And then in the past, so recently, um and I want to say thank you to Kathleen and Anne for your questions. I think they were good questions, um but some of your answers, Brian, were um if we were to bond, then the current bond rate is going to be somewhere potentially between this and this. And yet in our policy, it clearly states, it says, two percent greater than the current investment rate. So wouldn't we have a much better picture on what our investment rate is versus basing it on a potential bond rate?
Um, I mean, I think the the bond rate and what the market's bearing there, if we'd actually have to issue debt is a better indication than our um overall investment portfolio. I mean, either way can be used and we have things that are being called out of our investment portfolio early, especially with what interest rates and so things are are, you know, changing all the time there. I think either would give a relatively reflective indication of where the market's at. Um I guess as far as that's part of the reason, I guess we have a financial advisor with others is to tell us if we were going out for a bond um for a twenty year, you know, what are you seeing in other comparable cities when you issues, where does the market at? But um I, you know, there's a couple of different ways we could do it. I mean, our past practice, I think, has been if we haven't issued bond, we've gone out and used uh what the current market is in the debt issuance market.
Okay.
And then, yeah, I just see your point earlier too. Yeah, I I think the nexus of the discussion was the school district request, but I I would a hundred percent agree that. I mean, I think whatever we decide for the the school district is what, you know, obviously if we decide to change our policy, we would um, you know, put that uh make that effective for everyone going forward. So I don't know if anyone has, you know, the the uh for I guess purposes and more getting into Q and A, everyone probably, you know, would have seen the uh the questions that were asked by council members, McGregor and rep and pages, you know, five and six and seven and eight. We've pretty talked about basically the how we, you know, arrive at um the interest, the assessment interest rate, how it changes um and some of those type of things uh there. Um, you know, I guess as far as I, you know, I guess on page six there, you know, I I'm fine if we potentially deviate a little bit as far as, you know, especially with interest rates being lower now. I mean, I think the two percent above has worked well um in the past, but um, you know, maybe um you know, I I think it's a good discussion to have, you know, whether we want to look at doing something a little different.
Okay, excuse me, Brian?
Yep.
Brian, it's Anne.
Yep, yep, go ahead.
Okay, on 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 the page nineteen that you gave us, under B, the interest rate. Um in that paragraph, it says, in addition, the city experiences problems with delinquencies and the rest of that sentence. And these situations create immediate cash flow problems and the timing and ability to make scheduled bond payments. Has that ever happened in the history of you being there?
Um, no, we haven't had any issues as far as um cash flow or or being able to um make our our scheduled bond payments. We've we've been um, I I guess um, we've had a good history of here of our of our residents and our property owners making their um you know, their tax payments, whether it's their general tax, you know, it's all together or whatever, but it's, you know, it it we've had a high collection rate that would apply to both the our tax levy at large for our general operations as well as our debt operations. So we haven't had that really come up as an issue in the past.
Okay, then then to summarize, I'm going to say from the from the answers to the questions you gave me. If we had to go for a bond, we would probably pay between one and one and a half percent. And you would like us to add two percent to that number. Um and that pretty much can be our policy, right?
That's where we're at right now, yeah. I mean, our policy basically um, you know, states that, you know, if um to add the two percent um above the the debt issue. And so that's what we've used in the in the past. And that's what they're showing.
Brian, it, no, the the um policy states that if you don't issue a bond, then the current investment rate is the is the base, so whatever that rate is, and that's why I was asking that. It doesn't say um what a potential bond would be, it says what the what our current investment rate is. So if we want to use bond issuance only, then we need to change the policy, the wording in the policy. So Anne, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say, yeah, or go ahead, or Anne, did you have further questions or?
Well, I I I want to build on what the mayor is just talking about. If you don't get a bond, you're going to use the current investment rate and the current investment rate right now is?
Uh for a twenty year, it's, oh gosh, it's less than, it's low, it's less than a percent. I mean, it's uh it depends on, yeah, most of our investments we do on the city side is up to five or ten year investment of our our funds on hand. And even then, we're lucky to go and get, you know, a half a percent to three quarters of a percent.
Okay, good, thank you.
So this is John, let me clarify for my own sake on that paragraph. If we bond, then it's going to be two percent above the current cost to bond. And if the current cost is one and a half, let's say we charge three and a half on the assessments, is that a correct statement?
That's correct, yep.
Okay, then the other side is, so we don't bond as we're going to do hopefully this year. So then we say, now we're going to take two percent on top of whatever the rate would be if we were able to invest those funds that we're spending, is that correct?
That's, yeah, correct, yeah, I guess, yeah, how or as verbatim how the policy is written, which to me, I guess, my interpretation would be if we're going out and doing a a twenty year investment, what would the rate be? And with the city, we don't really do. I mean, I guess it'd be, I would take it a couple ways if we're going to use our investment rate versus the debt issuance rate. It would either be what would the city get for interest if we're going out for a twenty year um I investment or another way that I think I've seen some cities do it is the average weighted valuation of the portfolio, which would actually be almost a little higher rate because we actually still have some things that were uh invested, you know, three, four, five years ago and four, five, six year CDs that are actually still at, you know, two percent or or better rates than what, you know, the rates that are pretty, you know, low now.
Well, under current conditions, are we basically saying that if we funded internally, that our percent our interest rate on the assessments would possibly be a little bit less than if we bonded?
Could be potentially, yeah, I guess I'd have to do some analysis as far as what, I mean, to me, it's almost like there's always going to be buyers and sellers in the investment market. So when someone issues debt, someone buys the debt. So if if they are our financial advisor saying a twenty year investment is is going to pay on average, uh, you know, one to one and a quarter percent. To me, that's what we'd be able to invest our money in if we went out twenty years.
Okay, so we're basically, these both kind of shake out the same way.
I would, I would think so, yes.
I have one other question that kind of muddies the water here, but it this has always kind of bothered me and and this is probably a question of the mayor and the council. For something on an MSA road where we are not spending all city dollars, but yet the the assessment may be based or will be based, that's the way I read it, on the total cost of the project is using the same philosophy still fit, even though we're not spending all those dollars?
We're spending the dollars, they're just not coming from our coffers.
Yeah, I think the mayor's got that right. I mean, they're basically state that dollars that the state allocates, uh, you know, to us, to you and use on eligible MSA roads, they're still ultimately you know, they're they're just coming from a ultimately, I assume they come from transportation or state tax dollars versus, you know, local city dollars or, you know, however they fund the MSA pool again. So it it's it's still money that the city has available to spend on roads, just sort of a little different source.
Yeah, it's it's derived, the MSA funds are derived from our gas tax dollars.
Yeah. But it isn't something that came from, yeah, maybe that's what I hurdle I have to get over. It's not coming from our tax rolls, it's not coming from the 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 what we build into our taxes that for our our taxes for the year, it's coming from another source. But actually, that source is being based on our taxpayer dollars, is that kind of the way to say it?
No, it's not, it's it's based on, and I maybe we can have Allison quickly weigh in here. The the way they allocate our MSA dollars is based on our MSA road miles and and there's a formula that they use. Allison, can you quickly weigh in and 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 tell us how that's calculated?
Certainly, so the MSA um it there's the the MSA needs um is how they calculate, you know, what what's going on with your um with your account. So every year, the city reports how many local roads, how many collector roads, how many state aid route, um how many miles of state aid roads there are in the city. And based on that, um the city is able to designate which routes are stated routes. And then once you have a designation of stated routes, they start generating what are called needs. And that's based on a number of scenarios, but basically is is the road built up to standard? If not, it it starts generating needs. And then um the city also um is is the the needs are put in to looked at uh the conglomerate of the whole state and then the construction funds are allocated um based on all the the outputs of the um the varying cities throughout the state.
John, does that make sense? Like I said, it's a complicated formula.
Well, it is, it's not the, it's not the formula that I'm I'm hung up on. It, I'm still hung up on the fact that the dollars that we're using to construct or to improve what are deemed to be MSA roads are not coming directly out of our city coffers, correct?
We don't, yeah, this particular project, hold on, just this particular project that we're doing, we are not using uh it's almost a hundred percent, not quite, but almost a hundred percent funded with MSA dollars. However, there's been other road projects that we've done, such as Halsted, one good example, where we've used some MSA uh dollars, but then bonded for the balance because of the size of the project. Kathleen, do you had a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that when we use MSA dollars, the city fronts the money and then we get reimbursed, correct?
Yes.
So it comes out of our bank account and then we get reimbursed hopefully timely, so I mean, it is our money to begin with.
Yes, you have to ask, you have to um put in a request for reimbursement, yes.
Yep, okay.
And I think we're able to get most of the money pretty quickly. Allison could probably confirm that, but I think once we have an eligible project, we're able to put in for the majority and then get that in. But yeah, there is some, obviously, you know, we're not able to get all of it in right away.
Yeah, so um that's a great component. So um typically, we we get the bulk of the reimbursement from stated um at the outset of the project and the turnaround. Um as the Finance Director Grimm indicated, I believe the turnaround from stated is quite timely. Um in like within one working week, if off the top of my head.
Yeah, it seems like it's pretty quick.
Yeah, pretty quick.
So this is Anne, so if it's a turnaround that's very quick, uh does that mean any MSA road project should have a lower rate?
I think that would be
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's gonna be a council question.
Yeah. So it, yeah, go ahead.
Well, yeah, council question. It it's it's not a council question, it's it's got to be a financial question because I'm looking to the future of the city as to when it can get into financial trouble. And if we're trying to have a policy that goes across the board, it sounds like there has to be a separate policy for MSA roads versus other roads. Now, correct that because I'm open to edit.
Well, there, here's what happened and um this is an example, what happened with Halsted. And Brian, correct me if I'm wrong. We used a certain amount of MSA dollars for the project and the balance was then funded via a bond. What the city did is we deducted the MSA dollars from the total project and then we assessed um a a portion of the city's cost to the residents. Brian, is that sort of correct?
Yeah, with Hall, that's correct, yeah, with the Hallstead project, it was three point four, three point five million dollars and we used about one point three of state aid originally and then um did the rest was um a funded, you know, there was a city portion and then an assessable portion of the remaining two or so million dollars. So yeah, Halsted was a little different. Um uh, you know, this one is is more unique as far as that, pretty much the MSA dollars is going to cover it all, where some of our other MSA projects, I think there's been a a city portion to the tax levy that still happens based on the size of the project.
I don't think I don't think we've had any other, oh, we had, um, Highland. That was also
MSA covered, and I think there's a small portion, like, um, that we cover through our road maintenance dollars, like 20, 25,000 a year, but most of, it was almost all covered by MSA, and then St. Bonnie's portion, they kicked in.
Okay. So, kind of. Go ahead, John.
I was gonna say, then, on page five of the assessments policy, under the definitions, where it says use of other funds, it infers to me, the way I read that, that the project cost, and the project cost is what we're gonna base our assessment on, is what the city might have to pay, that's like in Halsted, plus use of other funds, which I read that to be in this example, MSA funds. So even though the city doesn't spend, need to spend all of the city dollars, and I agree, we spend them upfront, but the, the money coming back from the state comes back on a timely basis, so in essence, we haven't. So it infers that whether we get funds from somewhere else that aren't coming out of our coffers or not, we're still gonna assess the full project cost. And
Um, Councilmember Shumpel, and we at least deviated that for sure with on, on the Halsted project, because I think we were, we were, uh, nervous about the amount of benefit that would have been, um, you know, the assessment would have been a, a lot higher yet if we wouldn't have just deducted the MSA funds right off the top. So I know, at least in that case, we deviated from our, our policy as it states on, on page five.
Okay, so that's a, that's a one-off, that's where we will, as a council, will, uh, analyze the, the situation and, uh, come to an agreement as to whether we wanna modify for that one time?
Maybe, um, Brian, maybe I could, um, have Ron weigh in real quick on this, because I think it's an important issue that the council needs to understand that, um, about, um, how much we can assess. Ron?
Well, um, Mayor, I think the question you're asking is about the minimum amount that uh, the city can assess and sell tax-exempt debt. Is that the question you're asking?
Um, both, you can address both. So the minimum amount that we have to assess if we're doing a, a bond, but also, um, what are, how do we determine what the maximum amount can be, dollar-wise, not so much percentage-wise?
Sure, a, a couple of things. Um, you know, 429 bonds, which is what we're talking about, are one of the exceptions to the general rule about selling debt in Minnesota, which is that you need a referendum. You don't need a referendum for 429 debt. You can sell, and, and 429 bonds can either be taxable or tax exempt. Obviously, it's beneficial for them to be tax exempt. In order to qualify for a bond to be tax exempt, every, every property which is benefited by the, assessed by the project has to be specially assessed, and you have to assess at least 20% of the cost of the project to the city. So you can deduct from total project costs, costs that are coming from grants or other sources, but you have to assess at least 20% of the project cost, uh, in order to qualify for selling tax-exempt debt. The other piece of that, which is what the mayor is referring to, the maximum is that the, the assessment cannot exceed the benefits to the property. Tax, assessments are different than taxes. Uh, whatever you assess, uh, you have to make certain that it does not exceed the benefit conferred upon the property as a result of the, of the improvement. Uh, and so it is, I think it's a good idea to have assessment policies, because it provides general guidance to the city in, uh, particular projects, but they always have to be taken with a little bit, uh, I won't say grain of salt, but they have to, you have to look at each situation and adjust it accordingly. Sometimes, the percentages don't seem right, uh, because, as was just referred to, you can have a policy that says you're gonna assess 25 or 40 or 50%, but if the dollar amount that that results in exceeds what we think is the benefit, then you cannot assess that amount. Doing, uh, doing an assessment which exceeds the benefit is a taking, and obviously would lead to constitutional issues.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Questions?
Oh, and I was gonna say, that's probably why, um, we added page, uh, ten in the package, just for, even historical, just, I think a lot of the council members know, you know, what we've assessed in the past, but that's where, I guess that hopefully was helpful as far as just giving a refresher as far as some of the assessment per unit amounts on, um, projects that have happened going back to about like '08, so.
Yep, thanks, Brian. All right, so, um, I guess a couple things. So this is, again, hopefully not a long discussion, but there's a few glitches, if you will, or, uh, things in the, in our policy that it doesn't address. One, it does, and we've come across this a couple of times. One, it doesn't address how you're going to assess corner properties and/or double-fronted properties. And it has come up, came up on Halsted and on Highland. And I'm just thinking, we should have something in our policy that says how those corner properties are going to be assessed. Are they gonna, they, you know, now in the past, practice has been, we haven't double-assessed them. We've assessed them for one or the other project. So there were two properties on Halsted Highland Corner, and they were assessed for Highland, so they were not assessed for Halsted. Um, there was one property on Tuxedo, and it was a double-fronted property, and they were not assessed because their access was from a, uh, the side road. So I'm just wondering if we shouldn't have some, um, policy or, or written, uh, clarification in the policy as to how we're going to, uh, uh, assess those properties? Are we not gonna double-assess them? And if not, um, do we assess them based on their address? Do we assess them based on their frontage? I mean, how, how do we do that? Is there any interest in discussing that tonight, or do you wanna discuss that at a later time?
Ron, this is Kathleen. Is there anything wrong with how the council has done it in the past, where it's just a case-by-case basis of how we assess those?
Ron?
Oh, well, um, I think that, that the benefit of, uh, a general statement in the, in the policy is to provide guidance to future councils. Um, I do think you have to look at the individual circumstances, but for example, corner lots is a good example. The way I've seen it done is a couple of ways. One is by address, one is by which, which is the, considered the front of the lot, that's really a zoning concept, and you could do it that way. The other, another way is by access. I've also seen cities say, well, we'll do a half of this, an assessment on one lot, and when we, when we pick up the, you know, the cross street, we'll do the other half of an assessment. But that requires, uh, uh, the council in 10 years or 15 years, or whenever we get, uh, whenever we get around to doing that other road, to know that and pick up that other half of an assessment. So, you know, I think it's good to have something in the policy. But, for example, um, I think it makes sense not to assess a frontage which doesn't have access, because I think it gets to the point I made earlier, I think it gets difficult to show benefits in that case.
Okay. Kathleen, any?
Oh, go ahead, Kathleen.
Oh, Pam, go ahead.
Yeah, Pam, go ahead.
Okay, um, question for Ron. Uh, you talked about with the maximum, um, that who determines what the benefit is?
Great question. The, uh, ultimately, well, it's the city deciding that, and there is a presumption, there's a legal presumption when the council a, adopts an assessment, that, that does not exceed the benefit. But that is a rebuttable presumption. And so ultimately, if, if it's contested, it becomes, uh, an issue of appraisals. The city will get an appraisal, and the property owner will get an appraisal, and if, if the matter goes to court, then it's a battle of, of appraisals. That's one of the reasons why I think cities tend to be a little bit conservative about assessments, um, to guard against assessing in excess of what's likely to be benefit, uh, benefit. And typically, what you do is you rely on the city engineer who's putting together the project to be generally familiar with how much benefit a particular project is, depending on what it is. Is it just street? Is it sewer and water, stormwater? And what is the city engineer seeing in other comparable cases, uh, in other, perhaps in, in the same city or in other cities, to give a general indication of benefit?
Okay. Thank you for that answer. Um, question for Allison. When we, um, you talked about the formula, um, that they use. Um, when we are going through this, well, as we're going through this project right now, we're finding that the costs are a lot more than what we anticipated. Do they adjust the formula based on what they're seeing in increases in cost on products?
Um, that's a great question, Councilmember Mortensen. So, um, this stated, um, evaluation tool to establish needs, does, they do take a look at what's happening with construction pricing? Um, so, when, like, for example, when we start seeing increases, let's say, in, in bituminous prices due to oil, um, they will start to increase, I, I don't know how many years average they use, but they do look at a certain number of years average, and that's how much they allocate to the needs for that particular road. So, short answer, yes. Okay. Um, and then Brian, a question for you. How often in the past have we not bonded?
Um, if I go to, um, page 10 of the packet, most of those, um, the projects we've done until recently, we bonded for pretty much, I think, almost all of our projects from 2008 to 2017, we bonded for. The only ones we really haven't bonded for recently were the 2019 and the 2020 street projects, the DeShane and Oxy Oak and the Lakeview Margaret Shady. So it's really been a more of a, a new, um, thing for the city, I guess, to, just with, with bumping up our amount, we were levying for a cash tax levy each year, um, we've been able to, to change that, not having to issue debt every time we go to do roads.
Pam and, and others, kind of FYI, the city was not levying any, was not doing a road levy of any kind prior to 2015. I think 2014 or 2015 was the first year, and at that time, the first time we levied was 50,000. And then after that, we've been adding anywhere from 50 to 150,000 a year. And so since that time, now we've built it up. Now this year, for instance, we're levying 725,000. Next year, it's projected, again, depending on our budget, um, but it's projected to, or suggested to bump that up again, so it might be around the 850,000 dollar range. Um, so that's why we haven't had to bond in the last couple of years, but prior to that, we just didn't have the money.
Okay. And one other quick question. Um, the interest rates right now are very reasonable. Um, is there, and when, was there ever timer, will, I know there will be, um, a time that it goes over one to one and a half percent?
Um, hopefully at some, it, I guess for, uh, it depends on which end of the equation you're on. For, for issuing debt, it's great, but for, uh, investing money, I mean, ultimately, at some point, I think rates have to normalize a little bit, whether it takes another year or two, or, or few, or something, to hopefully, it goes back to a, a 2, 3, 4%. But I guess we really just don't know right now. I think they're just projected to stay low at least for the next year or so, I guess is what I'm hearing.
But it's very probable that it will not remain at that low percentage rate.
And not, not hopefully forever. I mean, I think it'll normalize at some point here.
Yeah. Okay. I think that were my biggest questions. Oh, one other thing, on page 10, uh, we've got the assessment per unit. Um, is there somewhere, and I don't recall seeing it, it shows what the interest rates by project was charged on those assessments?
Yeah, Councilmember Mortensen, now let me, uh, look at that again. That probably would be a good column to add. I think I'd worked together with Adam and Allison at WSB to put this together, I don't, not in the, not to, uh, recent past. So, yeah, I think a, a column, seeing especially the interest rate, um, has come up here, that, that would probably be good to add, and we could add that. That wouldn't be a problem.
Okay, because I would be interested in that information.
This is from General Office, and I know some of the interest rates back, going back to the Maple Crest Game Farm South Bay, even through, um, Halsted Enchanted, was more in the, uh, the assessment interest rate was more in the four to five to six range, because the debt issuance rate was more in the two to 4% range. So just to give you, I guess, a, a general outline there.
Yep, yep.
Um, I know we have to wrap this up pretty soon here, but there's a couple other things that, um, are askew in the policy. One, if you look on page eight, it talks about assessable costs, and, and it talks, and it says that, um, that bituminous overlay, um, is, is generally, um, you know, one or two inches, but it, that's in the assessable column, and we've never done millin' overlay or overlays, um, as an assessment. So that should actually be put into our maintenance category. Otherwise, it looks like we should have been, or, or have been assessing for millin' overlays and/or overlays, and we have not ever done that.
That's correct, and I think that would be a good update to the, I think this policy hasn't been updated real recently, and we really didn't do a whole lot of millin' overlays until, once again, the last several years. So I think, um, based on the council's decision and past practice, that would be, I think, fair to, to, to make that update to the policy now.
And then, the other update we should be looking at is, um, I think it was on page nine, where it says, um, let's see, um, oh, I know it, it had to do with the length of time, and it was saying, uh, roads would be, you know, 10, 10 to 20, 25 years. And, but then it was saying, um, other things such as storm sewer, storm water, that kind of thing, would be five to 10 years. And since we assess 50% or we assess the stormwater portion of it with our streets, they're all included. So the stormwater portion, somehow it should state that we assess, when it's assessed with a street project, it would be assessed at the same length. So it'd also be the 10 to 25 years. When it's a separate assessment, should that ever happen, I don't believe it's ever happened, then you could say you would assess it at the five to 10 years. But when it's included with the streets, we're not gonna separate it out and assess them 10 years for that and 20 years for the street.
I, I think that's fair, and, and just for, uh, historical, I think most of our assessments have been in that 15 to 20, or 20-year range, and so I think the 10 and the 25 are even on the outlier. The, it's supposed to give some flexibility, but I mean, I think that's, that's a fair statement, and, and, yeah, most of our assessments are usually gonna be 15 to 20, because it gives people the option to pay it back over a little longer time, or, or they can prepay, you know, when they get their assessment. So, I mean, it, I, I think it's worthwhile.
Okay, um, so let's just, um, go back real, circle back real quick to the interest rate. Um, where are we at, uh, council, um, feedback, and what would you, what, what do you feel comfortable? John, I'm gonna start with you.
Based on how it, based on how it currently Based on how it, based on how it currently reads, with the split between whether we bonded or whether we used internal funds, I don't see a problem with the verbiage.
Okay. And how do you, so how do you want the internal fund amount or percentage to be determined?
Well, it looks, again, the way I read it today, we're adding 2%. Now, the 2% we're adding, whether it's bonded or not, my understanding is it is to cover, you might say, administrative costs of setting up the assessments, tracking the assessments, if there's any defaulting on the assessments, et cetera. I know that's just, I mean, it's just a number or percentage, but I can't argue with having that built in to protect the city and to cover our costs. However, then the other piece is obviously whether, if we bond, it's the bonding expense, the interest percent there. And if we did it internally, we're saying what money, what's the percentage that we would have had, or the percent we would have had, interest percent, if we had then been able to not spend these monies but invest them?
Right, right.
Based on, but based on that, my understanding of that, I, again, I don't have a problem with that. My only problem, and I still have it, is, we can take it off record, but it's if we don't have to spend the money because it's MSA. And I'd argue it's not our money. It's not coming from our, we didn't levy for it. It's coming from the state. So why would we be tracking, adding another, I can still say the 2% to protect ourselves on the assessments in case there's defaulting and we have to track them, et cetera. But to add another 1 and 1/2 or something when we didn't lose those funds or have those funds actually go out of our coffers, I still have a problem with that.
Okay, so what you're saying is if we do an MSA project and it's basically funded by MSA funds and we don't bond, you're okay adding the 2%, but nothing else besides that?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Ann?
Yeah, I agree with John.
Okay, Kathleen?
Yeah, I agree with John, assuming that with MSA dollars, that, I mean, it all comes down to whether or not we can guarantee we're still gonna get the money back quickly, because, just because something is coming back in a week now, it doesn't mean in five years with a different governor or a different staff and everything, it'll continue to do that. Plus, you know, pending how much prices go up, we might get less MSA dollars, and so we might end up fronting more of it than allowing 100% of MSA dollars to cover the roads.
Right, so anything-
I'm not sure I agree with doing a specific carve-out where we don't assess based on the MSA dollars, because, you know, we could be back here again in five years redoing this again, because, you know, the current pricing doesn't work for us. Because it's all coming from dollars that the state gets, you know, from gas taxes and that. Well, as everyone is pushing towards electric vehicles, you're gonna get less gas tax money.
Yeah, that's true. And we're not talking about not assessing, we're just talking about the interest rate on an assessment.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the current 2% on top of the rate, and I agree with John on that specific point.
Okay, all right. And Pam?
I agree with all the others.
Okay, all right. Brian, do you need additional information or additional comments from the council? Do you have clear understanding?
I think it's pretty good. So I guess the way I'd understand, so if our two projects roll forward this year, basically, the local street project that wasn't assessed under the scenarios that I have in the pack, it would be more at a 3.25% interest rate, where the MSA, it sounded like the consensus of the council would be at just the 2% above and not the 1 and 1/2 for like financing, bonding, internally financing. Is that, am I understanding that correct?
That's my understanding.
Correct.
Correct.
Correct, correct.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the other ones would be, because we are funding those, they would be 1 and 1/2% plus 2%, or whatever that percentage is that we would normally get on our investments, or maybe, like you had said, an average of investments.
Correct, yeah. So, yeah, so I think for these, this year's projects, I think that's good direction. And then I suppose at some point, it would make sense just to bring the assessment policy back with those few items, you know, like we talked about the Millen overlay and the interest rate, and maybe, and have those, I guess, formally adopted or changed, correct?
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea. Yep. And then, so just real quick, there was one other item in the special assessment policy that we might wanna look at, and maybe Allison, you can ask, answer this. I think it was on page 15. It talked about if the, let me go there real quick. If the advertisement for bids, if the estimated cost of the improvement exceeds 25,000, bids must be advertised for the legal newspaper. Isn't that amount, hasn't that been changed over the years to like 75,000?
So the special assessment requirement would supersede anything with regards to the other portion of this. I don't know if it's statute or rules. Ron may be able to chime in here and correct me if I'm wrong, but the 429 process would supersede any other quote-
Okay.
...requirement within the statute or rules.
Okay, all right, all right. So I think we're good for now. Any other comments or questions? Okay, are we good then for today? Then we can, yep?
Very helpful, yeah. I think that was very helpful. Thank you, yep.
Okay, good, Brian. And thanks for all your information and also for the questions. So with that, we can then be adjourned and have a short break before we come back at 7 o'clock. Is there a motion to adjourn?
This is Kathleen. No motion.
Thank you, Kathleen. Is there a second?
Dan, I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, Ann, thank you. Ann, seconded that. All those in favor will signify with aye. John, how do you vote?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Kathleen?
Aye.
Ann?
Aye.
Ann, I vote aye. Lisa, motion passes 5-0. We are adjourned, and we will reconvene at 7 o'clock for our regular meeting. Thank you, everybody. Good job.